Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Jackson City Council meeting. The time is 10:04 on August 27, 2024. We are meeting here at City Hall. We have with us today the new pastor of Christ United Methodist Church, oh, sorry, excuse me, Christ United Church. And I'm going to ask Mr. Foot if he would please introduce him as that's his new pastor.
Thank you, Madam President. It's a need and honor to welcome and introduce my pastor at Christ United Church, Brad Goode and his wife, Rainie Goode. Thank you so much for being here today with joining us for the invocation.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand and following the prayer, I'm going to ask Councilman Hartley if he would please lead us in the pledge.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here. My wife and I are new to the area, moved here from Houston, Texas, and it's an honor to be here in Jackson. So let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this place, this city, these people who represent this city. Lord, we ask that you would empower them to do good, to do justice, to do that which is called according to your will and your purpose. Lord, we pray for this city. We ask that this city would rise up in pride, that they would rise up in purpose, that they would rise up as a community, as a team, working together. Lord, I pray for this council, that you would unite them, and Lord, that this city would be a city that the entire country looks to, as a city set on a hill that is shining bright. And we ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley and Mr. Foot, and also thank you to the Goodes. We're so glad to have you in Jackson doing the Lord's work, right? Okay, so colleagues, we only, we have three people for public comment today, but we also have three items, number 35, 36, and 37 with regarding the airport. And there are, there are some people here from the airport, so I would like to go ahead and take those items first. So if the clerk would please get item 35 on the floor.
Resolution to authorize the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority to accept the airport improvement grant bipartisan infrastructure law offer number 3-28-0037-065-2024 from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration and seek a resolution from the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi as co-sponsors for purposes directly related to the Jackson-Megar Wiley-Evers International Airport under auspices of airport improvement.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. I'm going to ask, I believe, the airport, Ms. Rosie, you're here. Would you like to come forward and make a few comments? Everybody who's speaking with the airport, please state your name for the record.
Press the button.
Good morning, everyone. Again, I'm Rosa Beckett. I'm the CEO of Jackson Municipal Airport Authority, and I have with me my Director of Capital Programming, Mr. Samuel Washington. We do appreciate the support of the council. Again, these grants are allowing us to do some major construction work on the taxiway rehabilitation project at Jan. And so it's been a several-phase project, but we are happy to be able to receive the funding to get the, get that taxiway fixed. And I can entertain any questions that you may have.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Beckett? All right, hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 5-0. Thank you. All right, clerk, would you please get item number 36 on the floor? Y'all can just stay there, excuse me.
Resolution to authorize the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority to accept the airport improvement program grant offer number 3-28-0037-066-2024 from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration and seek a resolution from the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi as co-sponsor for purposes directly related to the Jackson-Megar Wiley-Evers Airport, International Airport under the auspices of airport improvement.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Do we need any additional explanation? I think we're fine. Any colleagues, any questions? Mr. Hartley?
I would like, if there is any key projects, could you just mention those that you have in mind for this funding?
Okay, the, this funding will help the completion of the taxiway rehabilitation. So one grant is for 17 million, and the other grant is for 6 million. It was a very comprehensive taxiway rehabilitation project. We have active right now over 22 million of work on this same project, and so this will allow us to conclude the rehabilitation of taxiway Bravo, I mean taxiway Alpha at Jan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? We have a vote of 5-0. Thank you. All right, clerk, would you please get item 37 on the floor?
Resolution to authorize the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority to accept the airport improvement grant bipartisan infrastructure law offer number 3-28-0037-070-2024 from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration and to seek a resolution from the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi as co-sponsor for purposes directly related to the Jackson-Megar Wiley-Evers International Airport under the auspices of airport improvement.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional explanation needed? Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, colleagues. It's a vote of 5-0. All right. Now, colleagues, if you would please turn back to the start of the agenda, and we are going to go to pub, oh, wait, before we start, colleagues, I failed to ask, does anyone have any introductions or comments? All right, then we're going to go into public comments. As always, we ask that you respectfully stick to your, to the three-minute rule, that is, you speak for three minutes, and the clerk will give you a prompt on when that time is drawing to an end. And we are going to try to limit our conversation as much as possible so that we can get to all of you in a very timely manner. First, we have Anthony Smiley, and he is here to discuss with us shooting and the justice system. Mr. Smiley? You can, yeah, go, if you can, I don't know, not easy. And please state your name for the record.
Shilary Smiley.
Oh, oh, wait, sorry.
Shilary Smiley.
Okay. Are you going to be the one speaking instead of Anthony?
Me, me and him are on there, we together.
Oh, there's only one of you listed.
Shilary's. Thrasher.
I don't see, but go, go ahead, just.
Yes, ma'am. Recently, we had the suspect arrested, we came here last, I think it was last Tuesday, and they went and they arrested him, but they let him out on a $50,000 bond, and I was just wanting to know why is the bond that cheap for someone shooting an occupied dwelling and Melissa's mischief?
Okay.
And we still haven't heard back from anyone that's helping us with this situation.
Dr. Amori.
First of all, let me apologize for what you have gone through. But secondly, with regards to setting of the bond, that's the municipal court system. The judges there set the bonds based on what's put before them at the time. So we can't really answer that question for you, but we can check into it.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smiley, did you want to say a few words as well? No, okay, thank you. And as always, we appreciate you coming before the council and expressing your concerns.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all.
And I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. All right, next, we have R.T. Thornton. He's here to speak, R.T. Thornton? Okay, thank you, just come on up to the podium. He's here to speak to us about no service location, no notification to turn off, and no bill adjustment. I'm assuming, assuming this relates to water, but I'm not sure. Mr. Thornton, please state your name for the record.
Morning, R.T. Thornton.
Thank you. You may start.
Okay. I'm here because of the reason, we want to know in our cell the video, we don't have any notification when the water going to be turned off. We understand you have to do repairs, but we have no notification, you ready to take a shower, you ready to wash dishes or whatever, there is no water. So we need some type of notification on the water shut off. Secondly, we don't have no headquarters, no representation, who to talk to if there's a problem with the water. No phone number, no phone call answered. That's ridiculous. We don't, we can't get a, a answer, the phone number that they was given to us, won't anyone answer the phone. So I think that's a zero. They're not being precise. Now, finally, is that we were told earlier, once the water take over, the average bill would be $75, because they had underground leakage, broken pipes. Once, once those pipes were repaired, the average water bill would be $75, then that would happen. So we looking for some answers.
Yes, sir. All of this is under the governance of Jackson Water, which is sadly, I mean, it is not the city of Jackson. But I, we can, Dr. Amori, can constituent services help maybe facilitate some communication between he and Jackson Water?
Yes. If you leave your information with Stanley, who's standing right there, he just raised his hand, we can contact Jackson Water on your behalf and figure out something that might work. And I don't know what number you were given, sometimes people are calling the old city number that no longer operates, but he can also give you the current number.
The number that I was giving was 601-500, 5200.
That's it? That's the correct number.
And I would call that number over and over again, and no one answered the phone. Now, it should be someone there to answer the phone. Understand that it was the federal takeover, whatever, but I'm still paying the money to the city of Jackson Water. So I think the city of Jackson should be able to blend with me and find out what's happening on the other level.
Thank you. Mr. Griselle.
There, there is a big meeting tonight at the East Center at 6 o'clock. Jackson Water supposed to be there. I got a lot of my residents going to that same meeting. All the big utilities are supposed to be there, and I encourage you to go there and let them hear your voice, tonight at 6:00 PM at the East Center on Raymond Road.
Okay, did you all hear it today?
I heard it, but I'm saying, we're, we're, we're the middle man. But I think, because they're going to have their customer service people there, and so again, I'm encouraging my residents to all show up at that big utilities, it's a big public meeting tonight. And so, you know, if you would like to go there.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate the invitation. I understand that you are the middle man, or middle man, whoever, but how can we get to the man in charge?
We, we'll work with you on that.
Yes.
We'll work with you on that, just make sure.
We need the top man in charge, not the one in the middle. We need the one to talk to that can make the change.
We, we will work with you on that. If you just make sure that Stanley has all of your information, we will see if we can't work something out where you can get some response from Jackson Water.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming before us today. Next, we have Zach Service, Service, and he is, is he here? There you are. He's here to talk to us about state of emergency COVID discussion and website issues.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
It is Zach Service, you got it right.
Thank you.
Just really fast, on the state of emergency regarding the storms, I just, I didn't really have a great understanding of what's going to be discussed regarding that. I just know that it gets reviewed regularly. I do believe we're probably in a good place to end that state of emergency. I don't think we're in the thick of it anymore, and I think a state of emergency only needs to be active as long as it is a present threat, because that does change a few different things in the way government works and organizations can work. Two, I know there's going to be a discussion regarding COVID-19. Based on the language of the agenda, I don't know if it's based on something that's being continued, or if it's based on the idea that there may need to be something new with the, I guess, uptick in cases. I want to encourage the city and the council, let's not do what we did in 2020. Let's not try to control people. The job of government is to manage what people cannot actively manage on their own. So let's not fear monger this time around. Let's keep our hands off of people's rights and their decision-making, and keep it to a minimum if we do see cases rising and things like that. Let's get behind the medical professionals, let's get behind the people who are doing the work out there, but let's not start throwing out mandates again like we did last time. I had some very bad experiences during that season, because I personally, I had COVID twice, and I beat it both times. And you can beat that with a strong immune system and some vitamins. So even if people have a different belief on how to beat it, let's not mandate what they can and cannot do with their lives if we do see this get worse, and let's trust people to make the best decisions for themselves and their families. Now, third, I couldn't really get it all into one word, so I just put the word website, but really, it's about the dissemination of information. I do believe that right now there is a huge disconnect in the people's voice and their ability to communicate with the city leadership and be communicated to by city leadership. I have spoken with, I believe, one of your clerks, they did say there's a process going to update the website, because it needs some serious work. There's a lot of links that don't even work anymore when you're searching for certain information, you, it doesn't even take, it takes you to dead web pages, it takes you to places that can't give you the information you're looking for, there's stuff that's years old that's still up on the website. And then one very big thing, I'd like y'all to put on the future agenda, moving the council meeting times back to 6:00 PM like they used to before mid-2018, when for some reason it changed. I was not as active in council meetings back then, so I don't know what made that change. But I, nobody who's a working person in the city can make it to a 10:00 AM Tuesday council meeting. And if we truly value the voice of the people in our council meetings, we need to give them an opportunity to be physically present, and we need to give them an opportunity to share their voice, because, for example, you only have three public comments today.
I think your time is up.
May I have 30 more seconds?
Wrap it up quickly.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So I would love that to be put on the agenda and us to give people the opportunity to speak on that, and if anybody feels the same, that, hey, we would love this to be at a time in the evening where people who are getting off work can actually be present, I would love you to also, encourage you to go on the website, jacksonms.gov, and submit a public comment request and the same thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for coming before us today. Colleagues, we're going to move on now to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. I'm assuming that there needs to be with, pulled out separately. So with that, colleagues, all in favor? Mr. Banks, I didn't see your hand.
I'm in favor.
Okay, it's a vote of 5-0. Thank you. All right, now we have introduction of ordinances, item eight.
Ordinance amending sections 118-593, 595, and 600 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinance's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Procedure.
All right, so we had, oh, excuse me. We had a really good and lengthy discussion about this in work session yesterday, but I am going to ask Mr. Williamson if he would just briefly give us a, a quick explanation on what this is and why we need to amend this particular ordinance. And then, colleagues, we could, if y'all so, so desire, we might, could go in ahead and expedite this today. So, Mr., Mr. Williamson?
Yes, Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. I think some time ago, when the city began installing traffic calming devices throughout the city at the request of citizens, and when the traffic engineer deemed it necessary, there was an ordinance passed to facilitate this. And as part of that ordinance, there was a traffic calming committee created, and that committee was consisted of seven people, one from each ward, who would be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. So that committee was active while we were doing lots of traffic calming. They, you know, instituted some regulations around that, they approved all of the, you know, traffic calming devices throughout the city, conducted public hearings for, you know, prior to those being installed. But it's been, I would say, maybe five years or so since we've, you know, actively done any traffic calming. And so that committee is now defunct. And now we've had some interest from neighborhood associations in installing traffic calming devices. And I, I don't anticipate that we're going to have, you know, the, the flood of requests like we had before, because before we had, there was a period of time we had lots of funding from MDOT. So it didn't cost the city anything to do this. I anticipate that going forward, most of the requests that we will, you know, that would be considered would be, you know, self-funded by neighborhood associations, although there may be some exceptions to that dependent on the circumstances. But what we need to do is stand back up some version of this committee and, and, and looking at the fastest way to do that, because we have some requests that have already been made. It, it made sense, since we already have a planning board, to make this committee a subcommittee of the planning board, and it would still be, you know, seven members, one from each ward. Those members would be appointed by the chairperson for the planning board, and then they would serve the same, in the same capacity as that previous traffic calming committee served.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Any questions, colleagues? Mr. Griselle?
Well, I don't know if this is the right time, but what is the process to get traffic calming devices put down in neighborhoods? Over the past three years, we've had a lot of requests, and at the time when I was working with the supervisor from Heinz County, you know, there was some, you know, he would say he had to get this many signatures and.
Okay, um, so, and, and this is, this is kind of why we need the committee back in place, is because the committee would sort of look at the initial request and then make a determination about, you know, what residents would be affected by those calming devices. I mean, there's a, there's generally in the ordinance, you know, that anybody on the street where it's located. But in the past, we, you know, it's actually, some instances have affected people beyond that, and I, I know it, in at least one instance, the committee required more people. So you kind of need the committee in place to, you know, determine who you need to get signatures from and, and, you know, do all that. But the, the process would be that, you know, you would make an initial application to the committee, they would put together basically the signature petition that, you know, would be used to, you know, gather the signatures necessary.
Okay, thank you. I see in this letter, it says, I guess now it's going to be 75% of affected residents. Is there an application, Mr. Wright, that's posted online? How can residents get the application for traffic calming devices or to even go to the committee that would be established?
Louis, Louis Wright, CAO, City of Jackson. We'll have to look and see whether or not that, there is an application, and if we can post it online so residents can have access to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foot and then Mr. Banks.
Yeah, Mr. Williamson, when I hear the term traffic calming, I think of speed bumps, and I was wondering if there are any other devices, or is that the only dot device that traffic calming device? Is there other devices besides speed bumps?
Yes, you know, there are. Depending on, you know, what kind of traffic calming you need, if it's, for instance, if you've got a large enough intersection and there's, you know, an issue with people running red lights, you can put in a roundabout in that intersection. We, we've done that on occasions. You know, you can, I, there are a number of different devices in addition to, you know, speed bumps, although that's, that's, you know, a pretty effective and inexpensive traffic calming measure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I commend whoever took the work and research to, you know, look at a committee that hadn't been operating and then find a strategic way to get this committee back operable. My question is more so about the results. So once this committee meets and, you know, those applications are submitted, I assume one, there would be someone in public works that's watchdogging this. But the second thing, if we're going to have to do it and there's no funding from MDOT, is there a line item in our budget that we're considering now that has something set aside for us to address these problems?
I, I'm not aware of any funding that we have budgeted if it wasn't self-funded.
Will we need to set aside a line item? And then, number two, has somebody done any type of study of how much would need to be set aside a reasonable amount to get this program back started? That's a question.
Louis Wright again, CAO. We'll take a look at that as well and see where we can place it in the budget and how much would be necessary.
All right, so it does need, we do need a line item created?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banks. Colleagues, do y'all want to just let this walk, walk through the regular timeline, timeframe? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I, I don't mind suspending the rules to go ahead and adopt this, because I assume that we will need to put in place a line item pretty quick. And so I don't know legally if we can start putting in place a line item where there's no, nothing that exists. So I, I think that we need to go ahead and take care of this part, and then I think that there has to be some study during, during this budget season that presented to us about what that amount looks like, especially if we're talking about communities each ward, et cetera. So I, I have no problem with going ahead and suspending the rules to adopt this so that we can move to the next part in budget committee.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I wanted to, basically, I wanted to ask Mr. Wright. I'm not sure it's this thing, test, okay. Want to ask Mr. Wright, is there going to be a money issue here?
We can, Louis Wright.
I mean, before we suspend rules and go out of our regular process, will, you know, are we, is there in fact an issue that we need to be dealing with?
There's not an issue. We can fund this out of modernization.
Okay.
So that's the mechanism of doing it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Very good information. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks?
I move that we suspend the rules to move this introduction up for adoption. Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to consider this for adoption today for traffic calming. Colleagues, any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's a vote of four to one. All right, so clerk, would you please get the item on the floor? All right, so, Clark, would you please get the item on the floor?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, we can't. We can't hear four.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
It has to be unanimous.
No, if, if the city attorney will, please.
Now, that's, uh, Mr., we've been through this before.
What's the rule?
That is, that is only for, um...
Emergency aid.
Adding something to the agenda.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So this did come up previously and I, I did some checking. So first of all, we don't have to suspend the rules, uh, to vote on, for the ordinance to take place immediately. It's covered in the rules under Section 2-65 Procedure for Adoption of Ordinances. And what it says is no vote will be taken on an ordinance until six days after its introduction unless a council member specifically requests expedited consideration, which was done, and no other council member objects to such expedited consideration.
Okay, Mr. Williamson, that's, you were right. So...
No, 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 no.
Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah. Uh, Madam, Madam, Madam President, the vote for the consideration to move it up has taken place and the body has spoken through its minutes. An objection would have to be a formal objection, which meaning anyone who objects would have to say, "Madam President, I object. It would be too late at this junction now." And, and that objection would have to be taken up at a vote. It would be too late at this junction now.
Madam President, uh, look, uh...
Wait a minute, wait, Mr. Hartley, Mr. Banks was talking. Mr. Banks, finish, please, and then I'll recognize you, Mr. Hartley.
According to Robert Rules of Order, if there has, and if there's an objection, then that objection has to be stated on the floor and the reason why. And then it is up to you, Madam President, based on that objection, based on this law, either to say, "Okay, there's an objection based on the law," and then it won't hear. But you've already called for the vote. And so the motion now has carried with the majority without any formal objection.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, first of all, uh, the reason I ask is we're, we're rushing into this thing. The people, anytime there's an ordinance change, it's gonna affect everyone. And I, I am not in favor of, of, uh, suspending any rules to, to quickly expedite something, especially when there is no need for the expedition of, of that said matter. And our lawyer, uh, I, I'm hoping, and I thought that by my comments, my vote would be my objection. And I'm, I'm, I'm still, am I right or am I wrong? Or do I have to say something specifically that I object to? The reason it was being put forward for a speedy expedition of this was because of budgetary concerns. I asked the question, "Are there any budgetary concerns?" And the answer was no. Therefore, I voted, "Why expend the, why, uh, why put down the rules? Why not give the people the right to due process here? Why not..." The gentleman stated earlier about transparency, about, uh, having the people have a voice to it. And we cannot let the people have a voice if we continuing to, to, uh, to put down rules that gives them a voice. They have another six days to mow this thing over and to, and to, and to ponder on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Um, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Madam Pres, this is my last. I, I just want the record to reflect that we did hear from the city attorney that there were applications from communities already on file that they were waiting to, uh, get done. So I, I think that the, uh, urgency is that communities have already placed application. They've just been sitting there waiting. And the quicker that we can move on behalf of the people so that, you know, people won't be speeding down communities, so that people won't be speeding down community streets, et cetera, uh, I, I, I think that it helps, especially now that school is out. I mean, school is in and kids are getting off the bus.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Um, legal, how do we get out of this?
Uh...
And no one could ever say that our meetings are boring.
Right. So, so, so generally speaking, what Councilman Banks has said is an accurate recitation of the rules. Um, the, our city ordinances also specifically say that if a rule is not otherwise defined within the ordinances, that we refer to Robert's Rules, which is what Councilman Banks first used. Under Robert's Rules, an objection is a different procedural mechanism than a vote against. Um, now, once we get to that point, we're in a gray area for me, to be honest with you. Okay? I did some research on this previously and I got to that point, uh, very clearly and, and then didn't get much farther. I think that the proper thing to do right now would be for the council president to make a decision as to whether, uh, Councilman Hartley's vote, uh, counts as an objection, uh, in which case six days need to be waited before the ordinance is voted on, or that his vote was not an objection, uh, in which case, uh, the ordinance can be voted on now and it does not require unanimous vote for an ordinance to be enacted.
Well, you know, I am, this is, oh, thank you. Okay.
Here, here you go.
All right, so this is, okay, so I, I do want to say that this was not clearly explained to the council before the vote was taken. I also think that, um, there, this is a rather urgent ma- matter, or I wouldn't have even encouraged us to consider it because we do have those applications out and there are so many neighborhoods that are waiting for, for this, um, committee to be reinstated. And so a part of me thinks that maybe what we should do is, uh, entertain a motion to reconsider.
I think it's on the floor.
It's on the floor.
It's currently on the floor.
But no, it's not, it's not because we voted, right?
Shani, you're joining clerk of council.
Oh, we voted to suspend the rules.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's on, but it did, and the clerk read it.
We gotta get on.
Yeah, so it's not really on the floor. It's not on the floor.
The rules are suspended.
The rules are suspended, but that's it.
But again, let me, let me remind council president that there is no need to suspend the rules. These are specifically, the, the rules account for this process. There's no need to suspend the rules to vote on an ordinance, including expedited. It's, it's in the rule itself.
So we could just go in and get it on the floor?
No vote will be taken on an ordinance until six days after its introduction unless a council member specifically requests expedited consideration. That has been done. And no other council member objects to the expedited consideration.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you. And, and just, just for clarity, the expedited, the consideration of expedited consideration was upheld by majority vote of this body?
Okay. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, my concern is that we keep, we keep chipping away at good government. My concern is that how long have these applications been waiting? And six more days, what's the damage it's gonna do by having us follow the rules for six more days? We have to organize a committee. Then we have to do this step and this step and this step. Why are we rushing to expedite this council out rules that, that makes us do our job to the best of our ability morally and legally? Why, and, and, and to the tune of the public? Why are we expediting things? We need to do a better job of governing.
Well, Mr. Hartley, I appreciate your thoughts and your concerns on this, but if, if I'm hearing legal rights, it's within my right to say, "Let's get the item on the floor."
I believe that the council president can rule on whether the vote was an objection. I think, I will say, under, under Robert's Rules, a vote is not the way an objection is made.
I'm sorry, say again?
I said, I don't have the Robert's Rules in front of me, but the, uh, process by which an objection is made is not the same as a vote under Robert's Rules.
Okay. So, do I have the right to get this on the floor? Or not?
You have to, I think you have to make a determination as to whether Councilman Hartley's vote, when it was a four to one, I can't remember exactly what was on the floor for the vote, whether that constitutes an objection for purposes of, uh, ending expedited consideration. If it, if, if it is an objection, then you should wait six days. If it's not an objection, you can vote.
I think it is the culture of this council that a, a no vote is an objection. And I think that, uh, you know, perhaps we do need to have some, uh, study done and a workshop done, but that I do not think the op, the option of saying, having to say, "I object" has ever been fully explained to this council. And, until today, and I appreciate that, Mr. Banks. And so maybe that should become part of our culture, but right now, I really believe that a no vote is an objection. So, Mr. Hartley, that's, your, your, you, your no is the objection?
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, so with that, we're gonna move on and keep this as an introduction. And colleagues, we, if we have a reason to have a special city council meeting in six days, we'll take it up then. All right. Excuse me, and apologies, colleagues, but, I mean, all the audience, to the, all the audience, but, you know, this is sausage making at its best. All right, so we are going to move on now to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 280 to inclusive thereof on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,706,8,746.36 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Second, we have a motion and a second on claims. Mr. Malinbecker?
Good morning. Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. Uh, the following represents the four largest claims on this docket. Uh, they are as follows. Uh, first is Entergy in the amount of $1,102,646.60 paid out of Fund One, General Fund, uh, this is for streetlights. Second is Richard's Disposal Incorporated in the amount of $851,000 paid out of Fund Nine, landfill, uh, landfill private garbage. Uh, this is for trash pickup. Third is Metro Jackson Convention Center and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $285,778.51 paid out of, paid out of Fund, excuse me, paid out of Fund 203, Jackson Convention, Jackson Convention Center and Visitors Bureau. This is for the Visitors Bureau transfer of taxes. And the fourth is Holmak Corporation in the amount of $252,766.30 paid out of Fund Nine, Landfill Sanitation Fund, and this is for a boom truck. And that completes the report for the four largest claims.
All right, colleagues, any questions or comments or concerns about claims? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. During our budget discussions, we came up with, or something, something we were discussing recently, and there was an Entergy, uh, bill that needed to be paid, uh, maybe, maybe it had to do with the garage or something. And, um, we, we get bills from time to time that come through, and this one's $1,102,000 for, for streetlights. I know we pay for streetlights. But, Mr. Malinbecker, I'd really appreciate if you could get us a memo on the total amount of money that the city pays Entergy on all the different, you know, through the different departments and other things like that. So we have a, um, a real sense, maybe it was, maybe it was the, um, Thiamara Hall and, or the, where the Entergy issue came up. But I, I, I think it would be helpful for us to understand how much money we're paying to Entergy through all these different things, whether it's streetlights and other utilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll send that to you, uh, Councilman Foot. Um, and, and just so that we're clear, are you looking for a specific timeframe?
During the course of a year. It would be interesting to know how much...
Okay, for the, yes.
All the different departments pay Entergy for, you know, whether it's the, the Convention Center, whether it's the, the, um, Thiamara Hall and other buildings, how much we pay to Entergy for electricity and for the other services they provide.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll send you, uh, year to date, what has been paid out to Entergy, and then also last year, last fiscal year.
Okay, sure. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments on claims? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? We have a vote of four to one on claims. Paying our bills. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, item number 10...
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 30636 to and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of five zero. Um, Dr. Omori, I don't know if you heard the discussion yesterday in work session, but, um, Ms. Welch would rather just stick with her appointment on planning board. And I did talk to Mr. Keaton, and so they are, they've already got some other appointees to consider, um, at Ms. Welch's suggestion. And, and so if, if the administration so pleases, could we please pull item number 11?
We, we are in agreement with that.
Thank you so much. All right, item number 12.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Alex Lawson to the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, JRA Board.
Sumo. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Lawson, would you like to come forward and welcome to the Jackson City Council meeting? Dr. Omori, would you like to make some opening statements?
Well, I, I would like to, um, thank, uh, Alex for all of the hard work that he's been doing on JRA for the past five years. And certainly, he's been extremely hardworking. Uh, at one point, he was the chair of the board and working as the executive director pretty much because we didn't have one. So, uh, he is certainly the kind of individual that we would like to see serve on the vast majority of our boards. So, uh, we are very happy to recommend him for reappointment.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson, would you like to make any opening comments as well?
Absolutely. Alex Lawson, Jackson Redevelopment Authority. Um, one, thank you guys for having me here today. When I started five years ago on that board, there was no working relationship between the authority and the city. And if we can't get the two entities that by statute are supposed to work together with JRA, there was no way we were gonna do that with private industry, with government, with any of those. Um, since then, we knew that we had to get the right people in place, the right plans in place, and start raising resources so that we can get shovels and grounds on priority projects for the City of Jackson, um, and for the residents, and start growing that, the economy here. Um, since then, we've brought in about $17 million in economic investments, and we're excited about getting shovels in the ground finally this year. We know that there's a lot for us to do. Um, a lot of our work has centered around the property that we own, which is, in many ways, concentrated downtown, um, but also with an, an eye on other parts of the city. We're looking to connect Jackson State to downtown by exploring opportunities for housing, um, removing blighted properties that are there, um, supporting other, um, investments. We were able to step in and help facilitate the, the financing of the planetarium as a recent example. Um, we've been to the White House and had conversations with them behind the scenes around other investments in the City of Jackson and are continuing to move forward with all of that planning. We look forward to continuing to engage this body. Uh, many of you have met our new executive director, Christopher Pike, um, who has hit the ground running, um, with planning and, and, and reaching out to this body as well. Um, we're really excited about the future of it, and of course, Fair Street, the reason we were brought here, um, we're seeing some advancements there too. So, looking forward to continue working with you, and, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Colleagues, we're just going to start, uh, Mr. Stokes, did you want to say anything since this is Ward Three?
Uh, wait.
Okay. We're gonna just start down the line and we'll, uh, allow one round of questionings unless it becomes apparent that we need to, uh, have a second, um, ra- round. All right, we'll start with you, Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions at this point in time. Thank you for your willingness, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Lawson, uh, we had a conversation about the Medical Mall, and I feel comfortable with our direction. Um, I think that you and Primus Wheeling and other business, businesses can work together. I do want to shift my concern a second toward the Convention Center Hotel. And what was your business? What was JRA's role in this situation? Plus, who made decisions to move from a RFP to a RFQ? Whether, uh, JRA made those decisions on their own, others made them? And I'm asking those questions because as council people, we in the dog.
Right.
Everything taking place, people asking us what's happening, and we have to say, "We don't know." And it make people seem like we liars. We telling people, "We don't know what's going on, but this is on our watch."
I'm actually glad you asked that question. It gives us an opportunity to clarify a few things. Since I've been on the board, JRA has issued zero RFPs and RFQs for the Convention Center parking lot or hotel.
Say it one more time.
We have issued zero RFPs and RFQs for the Convention Center Hotel or parking lot. We have partnered with the city in ensuring that, um, the voice of the constituents that come to our board are engaged in that process. Um, as, I believe there have been about four planning directors since this administration, and we've worked with each of them. Each of them have issued, I think, their own RFP or come close to it. Um, so we've been at the table for having conversations about it, but we have not reviewed any RFP proposals. We've not been in, in the process of, of drafting it ourselves. We've not been in the process of drafting it ourselves. But we do own some of the property that is included in the RFPs, which is why you'll often see our names there. But we're happy to support the city in getting what it thinks is best in that place, but we've not taken the lead on any of that.
Now, let's make sure we keep the record straight. The property, the property that you're seeing y'all own was property that the city purchased and put it under y'all umbrella. It was not property y'all purchased, and the city has, this is city property. And it go back to when they came in out of Texas, and the legal department didn't put a reverter clause when we transferred the property to Texas people. They took our property, and then we had to buy it back.
Correct.
Now, that's when y'all come in, but the issue that I'm concerned about is, number one, the council has always been a part of any decisions about a request for proposals. How in the world are this taking place and the council has no knowledge? Nobody briefing the council? No one is giving the council any information? But the council would be the ones that have to vote.
Yeah, and I, I can speak to how our process is work at JRA. The board approves any RFP or proposal that goes out or comes in, and that does not happen on our watch. But you're, you're exactly right, and your, your recollection of the events are correct as well. JRA helped with the financing and, and, and working out the deal of buying the property back from that private owner when the deal went south a few years ago. That preceded my time on the board. But you're exactly right, the council should be involved in at least evaluating proposals and authorizing the issuance of any RFPs.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Crissell? No questions?
No. Thanks for your willingness to serve. I'm ready to vote.
All right, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, thank you for your, your service. Now, you served as president.
I am. I'm the current chair.
Yes.
We, we have an election tomorrow, so we'll see if I remain it.
Good luck. Probably won't have much competition, but thank you for your, your service in this. And look, I, I just want to check on my Ward Five representative, Mr. Washington. How is he doing?
He's doing great. We have full confidence in him. He is the person on our board who has the connections on the ground, who has the construction and development experience that balances out the professional and budgeting and financing experience from some others on the board. So we're, we're happy to have him, and he is the type that hit the ground running as well and rolls up his sleeve to help us get work done.
Excellent, excellent. Again, I think it's good to have a report card on folks that represent your people. And I'm, I'm looking forward to Mr. Washington, I guess, being, coming back. He's on there? Okay, excellent. Is he here?
Yeah, we're gonna take him. I'm gonna take him next.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your service, sir. We appreciate everything you're doing. I think with the addition of Mr. Christopher Pike, he's added new vision to the JRA, JRA scene, and good luck in everything you do because it really helped our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Lawson, thank you so much for the work that you do, and I look forward to the work and the vision that you have for Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to echo, echo those sentiments. I mean, you, you have given so much, and especially during the, the years when there were no, when there was no executive director and no apparent leadership, you stepped in and filled that void, and so we are, be sure and thank Mr. Bill Bynum for your, that, that you, he lets us have you.
He reminds me of it every day.
Yeah, good. All right, colleagues, if there are no other questions or concerns, we're gonna vote. All right? All in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Congratulations, and thank you again for serving.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
My first, I think a week or so ago was gonna vote no, but this young man is knowledgeable. And, and he, he's somebody that seemed to care about trying to save the Medical Mall. And I think, working with Primus Wheeler, that we have a chance. And I'd be glad to see him make sure that we can move this city forward, because JRA in the past was the backbone of this city. Any development took place in this city from downtown Jackson, changing from the days of Woolworth and all of that, that was JRA. And JRA has that authority to still do a whole lot of positive things. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, we're, and thank you, Mr. Lawson. We're gonna move, colleagues, to item 45 and go ahead and take Mr. Brian Washington's consideration. Please, thank you, Clerk.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Brian Washington to Jackson Redevelopment Authority, JRA Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Is Mr. Washington here? I didn't see you. All right, Dr. Omori, would you like to make some opening? It says it's a reappointment, we'll go ahead and go on even though he's not available to be here.
Right. I was just gonna say that he's probably not here because it was added to the agenda on short notice.
Yes, sure.
But he has been here before. I think all of the council members have, have met with him and are familiar with him. We met with him, and we feel that he is doing a great job on JRA, and we support his reappointment.
Thank you, Dr. Omori. So colleagues, he is not here, so there's no one to ask questions of. So if, if, are there any questions or comments about Mr. Washington? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Washington for his service. He has proudly represented our ward, and just can't say enough about him. We appreciate his service.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, colleagues, if there are no other questions or concerns, all in favor?
Could I make a statement?
Of course you may.
Thank you. So Alice Vonado Harden's sister, somewhere a week or so ago, and she used to be with Alice everywhere. And Mr. Washington is married to Alice Vonade, Vonado Harden's sister child. And I didn't, I don't really know Mr. Washington, but I remember Alice and her sister, all the things they have done over the years. And, you know, I have no problem. And I told her when I saw her, I forgot where we were at, but she came back and we had a conversation. But I have no problems in, in supporting them, and I know with the councilman for that area, saying that's what he want. It seems like that's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Colleagues, before I call for the vote, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Clerk, thank you. Colleagues, we'll go back now to the agenda as written. Excuse me. All right, we're moving now to item number 13.
Order authorizing the Department of Finance and Administration Purchasing Division One to approve purchases of personal and professional services of up to $75,000 to the lowest responsible bidder, and Two to oversee purchases of personal and professional services which exceed $75,000 each as described in the city's personal and professional services procurement policy.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Oh, excuse me, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, we had a very lengthy and good conversation about this during work session Does anyone have any other questions about this item? Okay, hearing none? Oh, you did, Mr. Foot.
I'm sorry. Okay. The, we did have a good discussion yesterday, and I think it would be helpful for the purposes of the video record here, if the city attorney could explain the difference between personal and professional services.
Okay, Mr. Foot.
In, in 75 words or less.
All right, he would like, I think, Mr. Williamson, but Mr. Martin's here today. No, you did. You explained it yesterday, Mr. Martin. He would like, he would like for you to reiterate the explanation between personal and professional services.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So the short answer is there, there really isn't a difference for procurement purposes. Anything that is provided as a service would be covered by this policy and is also covered by, well, state procurement laws that deal with services when there are any, cover both of those. So what we said yesterday, I think, was, I know typically, I've heard, I've had questions come to me about things like legal work or accounting work or architectural designs that can be professional services, so to speak, but that's, there's no difference legally from someone who is providing lawn services, landscaping services, or a variety of other services that aren't a product. And there are attorney general opinions to that same, they come to that same conclusion.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
One more thing here that's, this is actually in, is this the summary or the order? Yeah, in the actual, in the actual policy that's being voted on, there's a, there's a definition of personal and professional services, which is defined as the furnishing of labor, time, or effort by a contractor, not usually involving the delivery of a specific product, other than that which is incidental to the required performance.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just, just, yeah, just, just a quick question, and it deals with this because I think this would give the ability for Thaumaturg Hall to also get a lot of the things that it needs done. But is there a report, or do we have anything on Thaumaturg Hall that the council can get as we're looking at this? If we can get an update, I think that would be very good. And, and you don't have to do it right now. Maybe, Madam President, you can allow it at some point.
Yes, I think we got a pretty good explanation during the, during your budget process, Mr. -- during their presentation, but I think there may be even more to report. So, Mr. Williamson, if you could just provide us with a memo, that would be incredibly helpful. No, just a memo, written memo. Thank you. All right, is that all, Mr. Banks?
Yes.
All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it was four in favor, one opposed, one abstention. All right, we're good. We're moving on to item 14.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi, and the Hines County Circuit Clerk for services related to the redistricting of ward lines within the city of Jackson.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Again, we had a good discussion about this yesterday. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
I voted.
Oh, you voted? Okay, so it's a vote of six zero. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. All right, item number 15.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a technical support agreement with Pharaoh's Consulting Services to provide the city of Jackson with election consulting services for assistance, training, and support in the statewide election management system SIMs during the 2024 special municipal election to fill the ward two vacancies.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. We also discussed this yesterday in work session. Any other questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
With this contract, what will this company be responsible for?
Ms. Harris is not here today. Can someone else answer that question, Mr. Martin?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. I spoke with Ms. Harris a little bit yesterday about this and previously when the item was presented to us. So Pharaoh Consulting, or Pharaoh's Consulting Services, is primarily going to be providing support for the special election. I think it's spelled out, well, it's not in detail, but in general, what the order says is the utilization of SIMs in support of the special election, including any possible, possible runoff. Pharaoh's is a consultant that deals almost exclusively, exclusively with the SIMs software and, and the voting information that's in that. And, and my understanding is the principle of that has, has said, look, I'll be able to handle this with five hours or less of work, which is why the order is only for up to $500 to, to use their services. But Angela, I know, needs that help in order to hold the special election.
Now, this Pharaoh's Consulting Services, do we have any information on them, where they headquartered out of?
Yes, sir, and I apologize, I can't remember, and, and I know her, and so she's gonna be mad at me if she hears this, but Madeline, whose last name escapes me now, here it is, Madeline Linnup, she's really Pharaoh's Consulting, it's really just her. She's sort of been the expert on SIMs implementation since the state began that implementation. She works on a contract basis throughout the state and, and with the Secretary of State's Office. She's sort of the go-to expert on, on SIMs.
Okay, the reason I ask, I want to make sure we're on record. This is an extremely important election. We want to make sure everyone have a fair shot to win. And it's important that we understand that who's gonna be involved with this election, that the citizens have an opportunity to talk to them, see them, and understand who they are, what they doing, and make sure, as they say in my neighborhood, no trickery is gonna take place. So how do we assure the candidates who want to put their name in the hat that they will have a fair and equal opportunity to win this election without any unfair interference?
I think the short answer to that is that Ms. Harris and the Municipal Election Commission have performed numerous elections with integrity and quality over the years, and will do so here, too. What Ms. Linnup will help with is specifically making sure that the voter rolls are properly accounted for in SIMs, that poll books can be properly printed to be accessible at the precincts. And I think that even includes ballot printing, although I'm not certain about that. But it's primarily to make sure that the people who are entitled to vote in that ward are listed and are available and can cast their votes.
Now, some kind of way, I don't know how. That's what you need to get out to the citizens and let them know that this is what her responsibility will be, to make sure that everybody know there's not gonna be a fix in this, because they're already concerned about a fix being in. So we got to make sure that we checking everything over and over again, so when you come to vote, your name gonna show up on the book, and it's not gonna be a such thing that they gonna tell you to go somewhere else.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Curious with a vote of six zero. Item number 16.
Order authorizing the mayor of the city of Jackson to enter to a memorandum of understanding with Peters Real Estate and the Jackson Police Department to occupy office space to be used as a police satellite office in Fondren.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. We discussed this yesterday afternoon, but this is in my ward, and I just want to pause for a second and say thank you to Chief Watts and JP D. for making this possible. This effort actually grew out of a series of community meetings, and it became clear that, that we needed a greater police presence on the ground in Fondren. And so, colleagues, do you have any questions or comments of Chief Watts?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Chief Watts. At the last meeting, we talked about the, the Jackson Medical Mall having a satellite location.
Yes, sir.
And then, I just want to take a second to say, and I hate the chief had to leave, that a lot of people feel that it's gotta be more attention given in this city by, to law enforcement, because people don't feel safe.
Yes.
And I hope that, I hope it's time to make amendments to the budget, that we can start making some incredible moves to make sure people feel safe in this city, that public safety is the number one issue that's gonna move this city, and that when you have a 12-year-old, and I have cameras in my house, and I can see the station they were at, you know, there's a lot of questions, how a 12-year-old with an uncle and shot in the back.
Yes.
Now, there's a lot of activity takes place at that station. They have a good security guard, but he's only there till around nine.
Yes.
But the effort that y'all have at these locations, you can see the difference, that a lot of people not hanging out. We still need that barber shop at Ludlawn with Joe Wilson. I know they listen to us and everything.
Yes.
We need y'all pay close attention to that barber shop. No one's getting a haircut at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning. So again, we appreciate what y'all doing.
Thank you.
And the way y'all interacting out there, you just need more.
Yes.
And my position is, we follow them to Maple, and we go up to around 500 officers, and we pay them, pay them.
Yes.
And keep them there, because people got to feel safe in this city, and that's why you got people moving out, and that's why you have businesses moving out, because we just don't have enough police officers. But y'all overworked.
But y'all overworked, and you're working your hands off on what y'all doing, we know this, and a lot of people know this, and I want to tell the chief the same thing, he, he know how to interact with people.
Yes.
And to make a big difference, because people do not want to trust the police, but they trusting during his leadership.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments? I do want to just publicly thank Mr. Mike Peters for his generosity, this is not costing the city anything. So, thank you. All, all in favor? It is a vote of six zero. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank y'all.
Item number seventeen.
Order ratifying professional services performed by the Mississippi State Fire Academy for the Jackson Fire Department and its firefighters in approving payment for same.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Item eighteen.
Order accepting the quote of Metro Communications and Utility Company to perform fiber repair at Fire Station Twenty-Eight.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Item nineteen.
Order authorizing the payment of invoice number two four dot zero three two eight to Metro Communications and Utility Company for fiber repair at Fire Station Ten.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Dr. Reed, just the repair, the repairs that we're doing to this fire, it does help our overall goal with getting our fiber intact where we need to, to work on that, monetize and go, right?
Maria Reed, Department of Information Technology, yes.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I had a sidebar. All right, she answered a question. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Here's with a vote of six zero. Item number twenty.
Order approving the payment of invoice two four zero four one six in the amount of $4,000 to Metro Communications and Utility Company for emergency fiber repairs performed on, on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, at Mill Street in vicinity of New Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues, thank you. Any other quest, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, so vote of six zero. Item twenty-one.
Order approving the payment of invoice two five three three zero seven submitted by Upchurch Services LLC for emergency repair of air conditioning unit located at three eight seven South Congress Street, which is the location of the nine one one Community, Communication Division in the Department of Information Technology.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this one, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Item twenty-two.
Order requesting ratification of professional service, professional swimming pool diagnosis services performed by Bob's Pool Service, Inc., at the Jackson Zoo Splash Pad, and requesting approval of future professional services in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Item twenty-three.
Order requesting approval and payment to the Mississippi Recreation and Parks Association for previously provided membership and training services, and requesting approval of payment to the MRPA for current membership dues and training services for various departments of Park and Recreation employees.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero, thank you. Item twenty-four.
Order requesting acceptance of professional lifeguard certification and recertification training services for Swim Mississippi LLC for various city lifeguards.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Banks adding a second.
I'll be back.
It's a, it's a vote of six zero. Item twenty-five.
Order requesting approval of professional air conditioning repair and maintenance services to be performed by Universal Services LLC at Champion Gymnasium, Gymnasium, and approving future professional air conditioning services to be provided by above company in the amount not to exceed $5,000 at facilities managed by Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Mohammed and the staff over there on great summer basketball season that you had, providing opportunities for all the scholars around the Jackson Edwards area, Madison, because they come from all over the tri-county areas.
Thank you, Councilman Banks.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks.
The zoo.
Wait, wait, it's not on the floor. Can we wait till we get something on the floor? Okay, thank you. Item twenty-six.
Order ratifying purchases and procurement of services from one vendor and authorizing payment to Jeff Coke Fence Company, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it's a vote of six zero, thank you. Item twenty-seven.
Order authorizing Department of Planning Development to procure necessary add-on equipment and well-based software solutions from Eco Lane USA, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
Mr. Stokes is abstaining, everybody else voted in favor, clerk. All right, item twenty-eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Dale Partners for conceptual design services for, for Jackson Convention Complex outdoor event space.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this. We had a very good conversation about this during work session yesterday. Any other comments or questions?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Where's it going to be located?
Good morning, Council, this is Jay Keaton, Director of Planning and Development. It will be located on the block between Farish, Pearl, Roach, and Pascagoula Streets.
On the back side of the convention center?
On the front side of the convention center.
Okay, is this going to be permanent?
Uh, yes, for, for the lack of better words. We understand that this is not the highest and best use of the property, but we have to satisfy one of our HUD 108 national objectives. So, it would be a long-term use, yes, sir.
The reason I ask is, that's part of the location where the Convention Center Hotel.
The Convention Center Hotel will be located on the properties behind Fourth Avenue, up to Farish Street. So you got three separate blocks. This will be in the middle.
All right, what I'm saying, when we purchased all that property, that was part of the agreement.
That, that's correct. Well, the agreement, the hotel and parking garage was going to go on the block between Pascagoula, Pearl, and Farish, behind Fourth Avenue. There would be a green space where we're putting it, and on the block between Roach and Mill Street is where we would do a mixed-use development. So seven point seven five acres is what we spent $7 million of HUD 108 dollars to acquire, but we were not intended to use the entire seven point seven five acres for a Convention Center Hotel, just the block that's directly across the street from the landing of page, uh, landing point of the Convention Center.
So, back up a second, when you said the HUD money, are you saying the HUD money that we gave the property away for, the HUD money that was used to purchase the property back?
The HUD money that was used to purchase the property, I don't want to say back, but to purchase the property. We, we spent $7 million, and what was bought back was JRA had to put up some more money to buy the units that they, the property that they have, but we, we had a HUD 108 loan to purchase the property back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand eight.
And this will satisfy HUD if we do?
Yes, because the, yes, sir, the national objective was tied to job creation, but because we have not been able to develop this site, we found it to be beneficial to change that national objective to area benefit to solve that issue for HUD. We have been making the payments, so we're not behind on making the payments, but we have not been, you know, we have not met the national objective, this project would do so.
Now, finally, with the, with the property that we're discussing, the old renderings had a walk from the Convention Center to the, to the hotel, is that still?
So, I think that we can still, yeah, so that's, that, the walkway would be connecting the Convention Center Hotel and parking garage to the Convention Center. This project would not interfere with that at all.
Do we have any renderings that council members can see?
Well, this is what this engagement that's before you today is to retain Dale and Associates to develop those renderings, and a cost estimate to let us know how much it'll cost to develop this outdoor event space.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, it's a vote of six zero. Item number twenty-nine.
Resolution of the city of Jackson establishing an entertainment district named the Lamar Street Entertainment District.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. We did discuss this yesterday afternoon in work session. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. My immediate question was, haven't we done this before? And, Mr. Keaton, could you explain to us, go ahead and explain to the council, yes, we kind of have, and why we need to reconsider it today? Mr. Keaton?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mike can do it.
My apologies, Mike Davis is there to speak to it.
Yes. Mike, 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 get the mic. Mike Davis, Office of Economic Development. Yeah, you're correct, this is an item that came before the council. The wording, when it came before, was incorrect. When I sent it to DOR, they, they needed the word to speak to us establishing the entertainment district. So this is what's before you now, the correct wording, so that we can then send it back to DOR.
Okay, and this sort of dovetails into the item we just considered before.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Colleagues, any additional questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero, thank you. Item thirty.
Order authorizing execution of an agreement to receive donated property at fifty forty North State Street, Jackson, Mississippi, parcel five one seven dash eight zero zero.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We discussed this yesterday as well. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Uh, the property at the location, what's there currently?
The ECO, for Economic Development, there's a Cherokee Old Restaurant, there is a strip mall with about ten or so storefronts, and then a storage facility.
Cherokee.
At the corner of Shepherd, I think, Shepherd and State Street, about where the Golf World used to be.
Well, Golf World?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what's the plans?
To develop a, a vendor and, and food kind of, of space, right? A farmer's market, pop-up vendor space, so that we can, you know, allow people to come in and sell their product to the community.
Is it, is it feasible? And the reason I ask, we've heard so much, everybody finna go to Golf World, we finna redo this, we, nothing happened, nothing materialized. Is this going to be something that's going to materialize? Is it funded with banks? Have we vended to make sure that every, have we vetted to make sure that everything is, is reliable?
So, yes, this is not the, the Golf World space, it's, it's the space on the, on the south side of it, on the other side of the gas station there, and so what we're planning on doing is using our CDBG monies available to do some projects like this in the community to, to make the space more conducive to be able to use it as a farmer's market. And with us being able to do that, it will not take, the construction costs will be minimal, because it'll, it'll require a lot of gutting as opposed to, you know, building, so to speak.
Now, who will own the property?
The city of Jackson.
Oh, okay. Well, what about Golf World? Why?
Well, it's, it's near where Golf World used to be. We're not doing anything with that property.
That's why I'm asking, why not?
Well, I have to take a look and see who owns it, we don't, the city of Jackson at this point does not have ownership of it. If we, you know, who owns it, if we have anybody that may be able or want to put something there, right now, we don't have any prospects.
Oh, thank you.
But we'll keep looking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any, Mr. Foot?
Yeah, the, so my question is, the, you know, I mean, I, I think it'd be great to have it developed as a, you know, ongoing business of, you know, offer services or whatever, but I'm not sure if that's really in the wheelhouse of the city of Jackson for us to do it ourselves. And I, I just, I struggle with the idea that we're going to take this property, it's great to get the property and all, and that we, who's, what's, what's it going to cost us to go in and set it up, and who's, who's in charge of those revenues, or those expenses? And what's the expenses expected to get it up to be a farmer's market, or whatever it might be? Who, who oversees that, and do they have expertise in running a farmer's market? I mean, I, the, I'm used to the city being on, you know, that entrepreneurs coming in and do that side of, kind of thing. They put their money at risk, and they, if they, works out, they make some money from it, but I'm, I'm not sure if the city should be taking this on as a economic project where we're operating it. That's my problem, or my concern.
I understand your concerns, and so to answer a few of your questions, who would oversee this would be the Department of Planning, the Office of Economic Development, the Office of Housing and Community Development. So we are giving money from HUD in order to exact projects like this in the community. And when you're talking about a community such as Jackson, where you don't necessarily have a boatload of people who are trying to come in and develop, it's, it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out creative uses of the space. We could not take this property, but it'll lay there, it'll just sit there, and it'll continue to, you know, become dilapidated, or we could figure out a creative way to utilize it, and I feel like that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Did anybody else, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, I, I know this thinking outside the box, and, because there was a great area, this is the backside of the Chestane area, and the wide in the streets, and it's heading to Tugalu College and everything, but in that particular portion of State Street, it's run down, and it's run down so poorly until if you don't do something to turn it around, then it's going to spread like cancer, and they're going to start destroying the other parts of that Chestane area, especially with Chestane being closed now. So, you know, farmer's market might be a start, and hopefully y'all can encourage others, but I'm telling you, the, the big thing you're going to have to do is Golf World. You're going to have to turn that around for that whole thing to come back, and it's bordered at Ward Two, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a start, and, and I, I don't mind giving you a chance to see could it become a reality, but I'm just glad somebody realizing that a good part of this city is slowly dying, and if you let that part die, it's going to spread across fifty-five, and that's the Highland Village, it's in all of that, and that's we nipping in the bud with this in that hotel, and I, I don't know who thought of it, you know, but I'm glad somebody, I ride through there looking, and, you know, you got good homeowners in there, some of them are older now, but they purchased their home, and, and, you know, you're going to have to bring some young people in there, and the way you do it is, I, I think, what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else?
Well, I just want to quickly add, I'm going to try to keep this very quick, but, you know, over twenty years ago, we started the Bell Haven Market on a very blighted part of our Fortification Street area. It was an abandoned parking lot, and we were having nothing going on around it, and we were very concerned about what could, you know, what, the direction we were going in. And so, very early on, we started what was then known as the Bell Haven Market. It was the first producer's only market in the state of Mississippi, and we later merged it with the state, with the state operation now on High Street, because that's the, still the edge of Greater Bell Haven. But what we saw as a result of that market was transformative, and it, it is a lot of work, it's very hard, I still have scars, but it is absolutely an, an economic engine, and you now see what happened in that area.
And you now see what happened in that area, we attracted more businesses, and now adjacent to where the market was, we now have the Bell Haven Town Center. So it really can be a catalyst, but I am hearing Mr. Foot in that is, it's got to be remarkably well-planned, you've gotta have somebody there, you know, every Saturday morning at eight o'clock or earlier, and it's, it is incredibly hard. Um, so I do think this is a step in the right direction, I'm, it's also serving a need of, uh, it's responding to a food desert need in that area. Um, I think it is a step in the right direction, and I'm thrilled to know that we actually have some, um, funding to help with this, so, thank you. All right, colleagues, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's a vote of five to one. All right, item thirty-one.
Order authorizing procurement of parts and repair services by the municipal guards from various vendors and authorizing payments to said vendors.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Mr. Wright, the, uh, question I was gonna ask, uh, about the zoo, it's simple, the street at Woodrow Wilson and Parkside, it's, it's still unfixed. Now, I know some say that it's, it's the, uh, Jackson Water, because it's close to sewer, but the whole turning lane, everything is blocked off. Do we have any plans?
Louis Wright, C A O, uh, that is under Jackson Water, and there is, there, there was some work done in that area a while back, and apparently it has bubbled up again, so we will make sure that they are aware that, that repair that was done, we still have a problem right at the railroad track, Parkside, and Woodrow Wilson.
Yeah.
We'll bring it to their attention.
Okay, now, how is it Jackson Water, there's no water, is it because of the sewer?
It's probably sewer, or there may be a water line in that area, so we don't know what's under the ground right now.
They can't get to the zoo?
Well, okay, the south lane is open, um, that's coming, going north and turning either Woodrow Wilson or going to the left.
Yeah.
Uh, that's the area that is bad. Now, the other lane that's going south on Parkside is still open.
But the right lane is closed, it's got a big ol' hole in it.
We'll look at it and see how, how we can make the traffic flow better.
Thank you, my brother.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or, or comments on this item? I think we also discussed it in, we did in work session yesterday. All right, all in favor? Okay, it's a vote of six zero, thank you. Colleagues, item thirty-two.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson in the matter of Evangeline Johnson versus City of Jackson, Mississippi, and John Does one through ten individually and in their official capacity in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number twenty-three dash zero one five dash E F P.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Uh, colleagues, any questions?
Can we get some information without going into executive session?
We've got it.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. Ms. J- we talked about this case once before, but Ms. Johnson, um, there was a water sewer leak on her property in her yard, um, that was causing significant damage to her property. In the city's efforts to identify what the problem was and the cause, uh, we actually probably damaged the property a little bit more than it would have otherwise, and so this is a settlement to compensate her for damages caused by the city.
It's seemed pretty low.
It is. A lot of what she asked for were things that in our view would've had to be performed anyway, um, so there was a, a lengthy negotiation about it, but that was the result.
This is what they agreed on, they, they satisfied?
They've agreed to this, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote of six zero. Item number thirty-three.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement in all claims against the City of Jackson in the matter of Susan Varsy and her husband Damon Crum versus City of Jackson, Mississippi, in the Circuit Court, Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number twenty dash zero six six dash E F P.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
It's a vote of five in favor with one abstention. Let's see, item thirty-four.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson in the matters of Lakeland Seniors L L C versus the University of Mississippi Medical Center, the City of Jackson, Mississippi, Jackson Water, Inc., in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number twenty-three dash six five five dash eight H W N U S A versus Jackson Water in the Fifth Circuit in the United States Court of Appeals, Civil Action Number twenty-four dash six zero three seven two.
Sub move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item.
Make one amendment to this one.
We need an amendment.
There is no payment, uh, so, so thirty-four says order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims. Uh, we should delete payment of, it's order, order authorizing full and final settlement. This has been resolved without any, uh, payment by the city.
Madam President, sub move according to the statement of the City Attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Um, all in favor of the amendment as proposed? All right, it's a vote of six zero, now the item is before us as amended.
Question.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Without having to go in a closed session, from what you're saying, we don't have to pay anything?
Correct. I, I can explain it, uh, if you'd like, uh, so, so there, this, this is a water sewer claim by Lakeland Seniors, um, that they blamed the city for the problem they were having, but there was also a question as to whether, uh, U M C was responsible. Um, this is a case that, that I handled initially, Kiana Henry handled it for us later, and, uh, I think Sam Begley's finished it up for us. Um, but it's a case where, uh, ultimately, uh, the evidence, we believe, does not support any finding the city was at fault for any of this, it's either Jackson Water or U M C, uh, and the settlement, I think I can say the settlement will involve one of those two parties making whatever corrective actions necessary.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments?
Just, just one.
Uh, wait, Mr. Morton, did you have something to add?
I did not.
Okay, Mr. Hartley?
Uh, yeah, what was Jackson Waters' involvement in here, in this case?
So, they were named as a defendant in the lawsuit, um, and sort of fought being a party for a little while. Uh, the short answer is, um, based on the evidence as it came forward, they were willing to accept that they may be at fault, and, and ultimately, we either make the repairs and charge someone, or make the repairs and swallow the price.
Okay, does?
But it, but we got out, we got, the point is, well, we said, y'all settled out your own ways, uh, we don't need to be a part of that anymore, it's, it's.
I'm just curious about, uh, you know, we're trying to get Jackson Water to do certain things, and legally, I wanted to see how they were.
The, the, the short answer to that question is, they, uh, they exercise every, uh, uh, immunity argument that they have, and they have a bunch. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, Mr. Stokes.
Follow up on, uh, Councilman Hartley's line of thinking, I had a lady call me yesterday, a senior citizen, she's saying this forty dollars, they can't afford it, and they say you don't pay it with your light bill, you don't pay it with your gas bill, and these senior citizens are saying, charge them for the water they use, and they'll pay their butt, you charging them forty dollars and the sanitation fee, they can't afford all of this, can we not talk to somebody, ask the judge, go to, talk to the federal judge, and, you know, let's try to get some kind of direction? How, how can you charge people for some, a product or something they not receiving? They, they not receiving this water?
Is this somebody that's, that's being charged for water but not receiving water? Is that what?
Well, everybody, it's, it's my understanding from what she said and from what others saying, everybody got this forty dollar fee on their water bill.
Ah, the availability charge is the new, uh, so, that's something I'm still learning about, but my understanding as of right now is that what Jackson Water is trying to do, is split the bill so that everybody pays for one amount that they would call their, their, uh, fixed costs, right? It costs a certain amount to operate the system regardless of how much water you use, so they wanna split that around, and they're calling it a water availability charge, I think is the term they're using. Then in addition to that, you pay for your actual usage, which would be the variable portion of the rate. Now, beyond that, I'm not sure they've rolled that out everywhere yet, and I'm not sure that's something that we had any notice about beforehand, uh, and I suspect it will be part of some conversations that are coming up, Councilman.
When you checked the water bill some years back, we had on the bills five dollars, and I think they called it a meter fee or whatever, and they stopped charging that because it's a disadvantage for the elderly and the poor. You know, even though some people say five dollars is not a lot of money, you know, that's medicine for some, that's food for others. So, forty dollars plus the sanitation fee on the bill, that's over seventy-five dollars.
Right. We, I will say this, w- we, we are, we are having ongoing conversations that include, um, the issues you're describing there, that they're, they're, um, how to get relief for disadvantaged homes, uh, and, and that's a real question about this water availability cost for the reasons you just said.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. And we're going now to item thirty-eight.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-nine, twenty-two, state of emergency.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, I'm assuming you've all had a chance to look over this, or just a point of explanation, um, Dr. Omori, uh, could you explain why we are continuing to have these, um, on the agenda? Or could someone?
I would have to, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not able to answer that question as we stand here.
Think Banks got his hand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, uh, Madam President, usually when we have, uh, extended continuing of emergencies, um, sometimes it's hard to diagnose the problems that have happened, uh, I think this is when it concerns the flood, but problems that have happened downstream, problems that have happened to old storm drains, pipes, sometimes them problems don't manifest themselves two years or two years later, and you don't wanna close that in case you wanna use that money in the review process to be able to handle whatever problem it might have for the citizens, but that's why you leave it open.
Thank you, and I, I think in some instances, it's also sometimes tied to funding.
Correct.
Yes, um, as we seek reimbursement from FEMA and M E M A and other agencies for, uh, our costs during the emergency, we, uh, have to keep the declaration in place. There have been a number of things that have been denied, that we've appealed, and then, uh, two years later, they've agreed to pay the appeal, so there are a number of reasons why the, uh, emergency is continued, until all of that is resolved, and we still have a, a request for reimbursements that are, that we are appealing right now, as well as we continue to uncover costs associated with it.
Thank you, Dr. Omori, and thank you, Mr. Banks. All right, colleagues, and if there are no other questions or concerns, all in favor? Opposed? Wait, how did you grab, Mr. Foot? Okay, it's a vote of six zero. All right, item thirty-nine.
Order reviewing and continue state of emergency.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote of six zero. Item number forty.
Order of the Jack- order of the Jackson City Council acknowledging receipt of the City's of Jackson's annual comprehensive financial report and audit of the State Tort Claims Fund for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, we had a good report from, um, Mr. Hodges, Scott Hodges, um, on Thursday afternoon, and we were able to ask a lot of questions, and so, colleagues, if there are no other questions or comments this time, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Fund balance, when will we? Where you going?
Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO.
Short, short answer.
So for, for the report, the fund balance is included in the report, uh, that was for, um, F Y twenty-two, right? Uh, and in that report, the unassigned fund balance was twenty-seven million.
Twenty-seven mil.
Twenty-seven. Right.
So, what's your estimate now?
Yeah, so, in fact, um, Mr. Sharon has been working on that, uh, because that was twenty-two, so looking at twenty-three and also twenty-four, uh, she has not yet finalized, uh, because there's so much information that she's having to pull.
Can we get an estimation? Are we still above twenty-seven million?
We are, we're above the seven point five.
I'm sorry?
We're above the seven point five percent.
We're above the seven point five percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
In dollars amounts?
So, the seven point five represents anywhere, eight point seven to about nine million dollars, roughly, yeah.
All right, now, where we are with the twenty-seven million?
Right.
Are we above twenty-seven, the twenty-seven million was twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four year estimation, I know some things haven't been done. Are we at fifty million, we at ten million, we at eight million, where you think we at?
Yeah, no, so to answer that precisely, I think we have to.
Not precisely, just a ballpark.
Yeah, I, I'll still have to rely on, on the numbers, um, Councilman Stokes, yeah, I, I'll have to rely on the numbers before I can provide that.
All right, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam President, I just wanna let my colleague, Mr. Stokes, know that we did request, uh, the fund balance amounts estimates for all five categories of fund balance. All right.
All right, yes, we did, and so thank you for that, Mr. Banks. Um, we're still, we're still in finance committee meetings every, almost every day, Mr. Stokes, working on the budget stuff. Thank you, Mr. Malinbecker, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, yes, my only comment is, um, and following up this, our conversation yesterday, that we, we have follow-up meetings, um, within our budget, uh, committee to, uh, go through the discrepancies that were, there, that were found, and make sure we check them ones off that, that we've already completed.
All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, Mr., yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Uh, I don't want, and I know these budget hearings are important, they are, uh, and I don't want to wait till the last minute.
Well, thank you for that.
For some motions, but I am concerned about the direction of the budget in terms of the citizens' wishes. The vast majority of the citizens that I speak with still feel that they're afraid in this city, safety must be addressed. Now, that would mean it would change the current structure of the budget, I'll try to talk to some council members to see where the votes are, but we must make sure that we address this safety issue in this city. We need to have more money for police. We need to make sure that these citizens see money going to public works to pay streets and fi- and fix potholes, and these are issues that's gonna have to be the priorities. So, other issues where we giving money here, there, and everywhere, gonna have to be secondary while we try to make this city safe. And my proposal is five more million dollars to police, plus, we try to follow Linda Maple and try to come up with five hundred police officers, as recommended by Linda Maple. We must make this city safe by any means necessary, without raising taxes, so that mean we're gonna have to cut in other areas. Now, I can make recommendations, but, uh, Mister Doctor can make his recommendation, I, I do plan to lobby all of the council members, explain why public safety must be paramount, that people feel safe in this city, that they do not fear. that people feel safe in this city, that they do not feel today. And the only way you're going to feel safe, you're going to have to have a well-paid larger police department, and that's the item we have coming up later, is dealing with the jail and the status of the jail we supposed to have some years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, when's our next fin, budget meeting?
Thursday, yes.
At ten?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stokes, we would really appreciate your coming and talking to us about this. I know you don't serve on the finance committee, but we would, we would love for you to come, so that would be a great way for you to engage your concerns with us. That would be awesome. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I guess as we look at this and as we look at what we're going to be able to do, I know, and I just want to bring this up, Councilman Stokes, and hopefully you'll be there Thursday, that the presentation for the chief was a starting salary at fifty-one, it was fifty even? Okay, at fifty thousand even, which puts us very competitive with all the other agencies. I am familiar with the Maple, Linda, I believe that costs for somewhere between four-hundred-fifty to five-hundred officers. I, you know, I think it's a worthy ask based on his request to get what that number would look like as an addition, but my concern is if we can look at legally and historically, and Councilman Stokes, we're going to need your help with this. When it comes to the fee that has been charged or was charged per inmate from this, or per person that was at the holdup for the facility from Jackson, that is being revisited or either demanded, and could be some financial problems, and so I, I remember there being some type of agreement to why we didn't have to pay it, and so that, that has come back up again, and I think that we need some type of analysis, or if you could provide some type of historical context to legal on why we didn't pay that or why we stopped paying it.
It was an agreement with the board of supervisors and the city council, and signed by the mayor, that they would be over certain things, and they would pay these, these charges. And the reason they were us, they agreed to that because the city of Jackson is, what, seventy-plus percent of Hines County.
Right.
So we paying two times. We paying for the city, then we paying for the county, and, and people feel that that's not fair, you know, even with the library, we, we paying for the city libraries, then we paying for the county libraries, and our tax money is not coming back to the city like it should. In terms of, of the police situation, it's important that we understand that with Linda Maple, even though they're saying four-hundred-fifty to five-hundred, we're seeing, and people in this city are saying, excuse me, Capitol Police has only been established three to four years, and they have almost as many police officers as the city of Jackson, and we've been established since eighteen-twenty-two. It was wrong when the council decided to cut the police budget, and it's wrong now because people not safe, and there's some bad people in this city, and you don't want to come and contact your, your loved ones with these bad people, and they're equal to death. The only way we're going to get at this problem, we got to get police officers and pay them, and like they used to do when we were younger, go to these colleges, get these football players, get them out the military, and that mean we're going to have to cut some of these departments. We got to look at the population of Jackson thirty years ago, and we did not have all the departments and department heads. It's got to be priorities. Safety got to be number one, public works, which would be your streets, getting paid, and potholes being fixed got to be number two, and they're going to have to merge some of these divisions. I, I would put, it was my suggestion, and I'm ready to move on.
I was going to say, Mr. Stokes, I, I, we, we would love for you to come to the meeting on Thursday. I don't want to upend Mr. Banks' finance committee meeting on Thursday, and so I...
I'd be there, too.
Well, we will look forward to seeing you there. All right, colleagues, are there any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain, Madam President.
Okay. This is accepting the audit, Mr. Stokes. All right, so we are, we have a vote of five in favor and one abstention. All right, colleagues, thank you, and I appreciate all your thoughts, Mr. Stokes. All right, item forty-one.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, supporting the designation of Woodrow Wilson Avenue as the medical corridor of the city of Jackson.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Stokes, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam President. Some years back, we were hoping to have the state and everyone come on board for the official designation of a medical corridor of Woodrow Wilson. We need that now because Woodrow Wilson is the heart for people going to the VA hospital, the University Medical Center, Jackson Medical Mall, where UMC and the council center, and as businesses and other people go to banks and try to establish businesses, they always asked about the economic heartbeat of the area. So individually, it might not be as strong, but as a medical corridor, it is. It's, it's, it's just the right thing to do in terms of the destination. We need to make sure we can keep these hospitals and keep medical facilities open in there, but right now it's there, and we need to appreciate it because Rankin County is slowly trying to move in a direct create a medical corridor that's going to hurt Jackson. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know the particulars, several years back, the state set up what's, I think, considered a healthcare corridor or medical corridor. It goes along Lakeland Drive where a lot of the hospitals, and then there's, I think there's some advantage that they may provide in proper, in some kind of, you know, tax, you know, related advantage. Can anybody, does anybody know anything about that?
There was an organization, there was, it was the creation of JMed, the Jackson Medical Education District, and if I am not mistaken, I don't know that it still formally exists. And, but it, it was like a cross, it was on the map. If you looked at it, it was, it was the Woodrow Wilson Lakeland Drive corridor, and then went down and captured Bellhaven, Millsaps, and Baptist, and so it was the Jackson Medical Education District.
So that doesn't exist anymore? There's no special...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But that's been probably, that's been at least twenty years ago, I think.
Okay, thank you.
But, so, Mr. Stokes, I think, as I understand this, what you want to do is just draw attention specifically to Woodrow Wilson.
And hopefully, we can get the train back on the track to really enhance the medical corridor that's taking place in Jackson, and we got to make sure that, we start with Woodrow Wilson because the VA is recognized all over the world, that's one of the top VAs in the world, and when you come up Woodrow Wilson, you got the university hospital, you got the Jackson Medical Mall, that could be the catalyst to expanding this medical corridor and get the conversation back to the legislature and everyone else to get this moving again.
Okay, thank you. So do we want to amend it to include the original JMed area, or do you want to keep it specific?
It doesn't, if the memecan help, it doesn't, it's not anything that I'm just married to like this, if the overall goal, let's get this thing back started again.
Well, I would like to propose an amendment that we, and this is going to be loose, but that we amend this to designate the original Jackson Medical Education District as the medical corridor of the city of Jackson.
Second.
We have a second on that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the amendment as proposed? Thank you, colleagues. So the amendment is now, the item is now before us as amended. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in...
Miss...
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, Mr. Banks, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, with this reestablishment, wasn't there a six-member commission?
I don't recall that. There was a, there was a board of, the JMed board I know existed, and maybe the state did have a commission, I just don't recall.
Yeah, I think there was one because at Jack State University, the airport, all of them were involved with that area, and, and I think as we look at this, if legal, if we could pull up, I believe that's twenty-twelve through twenty-fifteen conversation, that's how long it lasted, but I'm seeing here that there was a commission set up.
That, from the state, I think, you're right. So it does need some more development, but at least we will, we, today, we will at least say that this matters to us, and we want to think about it again. Yes, Mr. Stokes, did you?
Yes, Madam President, the, the state issue was, was one that slow, was one that slowly became defunct, but what we must do in Jackson is, we depend heavily on the medical community. I'm talking about people come from all over to our hospitals. If you look at Houston, there's a lot of positive things in Houston, but their medical facilities are second to none. Kings and queens all over the world go to Houston for medical attention, and I never forget, we had a gentleman who came and got at our hospitals, at the university, had a major transplant, I think, lungs and kidneys and everything else. These hospitals here are valuable, and I was talking to someone, if you look at the construction on, on Lakeland Drive, that's the new nurses' school that they're building so they can have more nurses. So what we must do is make sure that we enhance this medical community, and we urge the state to span any opportunities they can to help the city and to help the medical community.
And I thank you for that, and I do want to say that this, this district that was created really, the focus really was medical. It was about, the education, I think mostly, was about UMC. All right, did you have something to say, Mr.?
I did, thank you, Madam President. Years ago, when I was in graduate school, we were, we had a guest speaker who was Dan Jones, former chancellor of Ole Miss, and at the time, he was over UMMC, and when, in our, in our conversations with him, he talked about the state's desire to get where the JSU football stadium is, to then take the medical corridor all the way down to Hawkins Field, and ever since then, I've been waiting, you know, for a lot of this to happen, and so I think, well, part of his vision, and I, and I think the favor is still there, the desire is still there to still make this happen, so I'm completely in favor of this, but I just want to be clear that it's supposed to go all the way to Hawkins Field and not stop at the medical mall, but I think that, that will also help to re-rent, you know, bring some more life back into the area and also support our economy.
Thank you, Mr. Grisell, that is well thought.
But the stadium is holding it up.
Good thoughts, yeah. But I do think, I mean, he, I mean, really, you're right, I mean, I think there was some conversation about the, then expanding the research corridor and all that that went over, yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
The overall goal was to fly people in, that's how Hawkins Field.
That's right.
They were going to fly a million for transplants and, and everything else, and they had that corridor so that it, when you have a lawn, a heart, you want to make sure there's no traffic jams. So I, I think we can get the train back on the track, and I think we can get the legislators to get involved also, but we need to start moving because Rankin County is moving medically, whether we paying attention or not, they building a lot of medical facilities, Lakeland and those suburb areas, and we need to get back involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, colleagues, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes, for putting that on the agenda, it's a vote of six zero. All right, item forty-two.
Order of the Jackson City Council authorizing payment to Mary and Percy Jackson in the amount of ten thousand dollars for damage to their automobile.
Somu.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Hartley?
Just, you know, and I am sympathetic to the plight that I've discussed it with the, with the family. How does this stand legally, and how does this fit into a process where we, we pay folks?
Sure. So this falls outside of the process regardless, and could it be legal? Yes, if they have been damaged, and if it was, and if the city is responsible for the damage they've suffered, and if we know what that damage is to a quantifiable amount. What's happened so far in this case, just to give you an update, I did, I did get an update on this for the council. The claim, so, so our risk management did transfer the claim over to Jackson Water so they could look into it. They have been investigating it and have discovered what they believe was a sewer cut that was caused by a third-party contractor. Because of the timeframe, that, because it's a sewer utility cut, that probably comes back to the city. I just found this out this morning, so I'm not a hundred percent sure yet. If that's the case, then the city would, would resume processing the claim. We would reach out to them, we would do an investigation, take photographs of the area, find out if the city had prior notice of the, whatever caused the accident, if anything, and make a recommendation based on their receipts and documentation about a payment to them, if any. If a third-party contractor performed a negligent, or did negligent work on the utility cut, for example, we would seek the compensation from that contractor. And so, right now, all I can tell you is, if we let the process play out, and if there is a third party that is responsible, then we would come back to the council with a recommendation of that payment at some point by the city. But it's very possible, as what we currently have is a cause that may have been a third-party contractor, it may have been somebody hired by Jackson Water, we don't have, or I haven't seen, perhaps somebody else has, the dollar figures of the accident, and there's some other questions that would normally be asked, is there insurance here, how fast was the car going, and those sorts of things that also can contribute to or be a part of the accident. So what I would say, the best answer I can give you to your question is, from our, from the, from the office of the city attorney, I would call a payment premature.
Okay, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Normally with, with insurance companies, they would, if they pay, they would try to get their money from the third party that you mentioned. This family has been without transportation for far too long. Could, if you seen that there's possibly third-party people, could the city try to recoup their money from those third-party people? But we make these citizens whole because we know for a fact that what happened, happened in the city of Jackson on our streets, they have tried to give everything that citizens and, I mean, this legal department, this council wanted in terms of evidence, and they're not going anywhere. They'll be right here to testify and everything else, but they can't keep coming week after week after week, meeting after meeting after meeting, and it's always, we move the goalposts. Soon as it's time for them to cross the goalposts, we move it. They need to be treated in such a manner that other citizens in this city realize they're number one. Customer's always right. The citizen got to be treated in such a manner that they're proud to say, I live in Jackson, Mississippi. So I'm hoping... a manner that they're proud to say, I live in Jackson, Mississippi. So I'm hoping that we can vote to pay these, this family, they can get them some transportation, try to start their life after, whether Jackson Water, the city of Jackson, whatever happened. And as the city keep investigating, we find out it was a third party, we go at the third party to get our money back. That's what the insurance companies do. And I think we need to make sure we put these citizens first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? I want to add that I have a great deal of sympathy for the Jackson family, and I am sorry that this has gone on. I'm encouraged by what the city attorney has learned today and what he's found out. It sounds like that there may be a path forward, one way or another, to solvent, resolving this issue. But I, I just told Mr. Stokes, I am not comfortable voting for this today because this document is here, and I appreciate him writing it and putting it in here, but there's no supporting documentation, which makes it legally insufficient for me personally. Other council members may disagree with me, but this item, without any kind of documentation attached, justifying that we spend this money in this way, you know, even something from a body shop would help. I just can't vote for it today. So thank you. Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. You know, I'm weighing again, the timeliness, the, the issue. And I think the, the family has some additional documents that they can present to, to our legal department that may help this process. But this is taxpayers' money, and there's a sense of checks and balances when we use that money. And we have to be cautious. And I'm for letting the process go through as quickly as possible. But, you know, I just, it just, red flags jump up when we don't follow that process because this is not our money. I wish we had a slush fund. I wish there was a, someone out there that can donate a vehicle. And if anyone listening and you have a spare vehicle that you could assist this family, if there's a church out there, if there's a vehicle out there that you can, you can help this family, please step up. And we'll make sure we give you all the credit and make announcements and, and have you in a parade, okay? But this is, but when we, you know, our job is to careful expenditure of taxpayers' money, and it, it requires that we follow procedures. And with that, Madam Chair, I withdraw my second.
Oh, you withdrew your second, Mr. Hartley? Okay, well, then, we don't have a, we don't have a, we have only a motion, and so the item is now no longer on the floor.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Banks.
Whoever made the motion will have to withdraw it, or the item will die for a lack of a second.
Wait, say again.
Whoever made the motion will have to.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Withdraw it, or the item will die for a lack of a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Stokes, are you interested in tabling this for today and giving us time to get these copies and considering it? Would you be willing to withdraw your motion at this point? So we have time to actually work on this and get it legally sufficient?
Okay. I don't, I don't mind getting legally sufficient, but they keep bringing information, who they need to give, because they getting things from the body shops and everybody else. They don't know who to give it to. Is there anything else that they need from this family?
Well, Mr. Stokes, I would suggest that they start by giving it to you so you can attach it to these, to this order.
Well, I would tell them to give it to the clerk or legal. They, they keep wanting to give it to legal because they said, the mayor said he was going to talk to them. That conversation has not happened. Legal has not talked to them. So they in a place now to come to the meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Banks?
Point of order, Madam President. Let me put my second back on, let me put a second on the floor so that Stokes can continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us straight, Mr. Banks. Okay, Mr. Stokes.
Counselor Stokes, I will let you know that if what, if the information I received this morning is correct, then through our risk management, we will reach out to them within days, and they will, there will be a checklist of information that we need.
Okay, I, I see. And we thank you for, but I just want you to take one second, legal, and look at their side. They're the ones that been injured. They've been hurt. They have come down here to City Hall, where most people say there's no need to come to City Hall because you can't get justice. And they here. And now we saying come back, or somebody going to call you. The mayor said he was going to talk to them. Never materialized. You know, they tore up their car, almost got killed. And now we telling them we can't vote to support them being made whole. And that's, that's part of the state of Mississippi law on the chancery, making people whole. They need to be made whole. And that's all they ask for. They ain't asking for pay their damage and hospital bills and all that kind of stuff. But if we don't have a second, and it'll die for a lack of a second, after the second is removed, and then they out of even having the opportunity to be paid, and I know that's what legal is saying, then, you know, then when? When will they have a chance to get some justice?
I'm sorry. Mr. Martin, how quickly can someone from your department reach out to the Jackson family?
Well, there's two answers to that. I mean, we could reach out today, but it's, it's premature for me to say that's the right thing to do yet. What I need to know is, I need to go ask a few questions. But if this has been, for lack of a better phrase, transferred back from Jackson Water to the city, as soon as we confirm that, we will reach out to them immediately. But if Jackson Water is not giving it back to us, then that's a waste of the city's resources. The Jackson Water should continue if they have it. So I'm not trying to talk out of both sides of my mouth. I agree that, and I feel bad for this family too. I will just say that we get hundreds and even thousands of these claims, and to treat one differently than all the others does raise some questions.
I, I understand. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you could also just make sure that whatever request or whatever the Jackson family may need to provide, that you get them the information so that you can get it ahead of time, so you can review that.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, oh, go ahead, Counselor.
Just one other thing, and this is for the family. Can you tell us your need? And I will send it out to my ward village, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. You know, I agree with my colleague, and I, and I, and I, I see, you know, the pain of not being able to go to work and not getting the groceries and being inconvenienced, and then it's on the city. But I also see that maybe there's another way we can handle this. So if you would, write your need down. I will send it out to all of my folks, including the churches, and ask them if they could have a part in meeting that need. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right.
All right. Madam President.
Yes.
I withdraw my second.
All right. So the motion dies for lack of a second.
Well.
But.
To the withdraw his motion. Oh, he doesn't.
Well, I don't think these citizens really want us, want me to withdraw the motion because it seem like we playing games with them. If it dies for a lack of a second, you know, maybe we can reintroduce legal. If it dies for a lack of a second, it wouldn't necessarily stop the claim they filed, would it?
It will not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, we are moving on now to item number forty-three.
Order ratifying an amendment to the contract with Countess Arro Colthorn Davis, a professional association for architectural and engineering services for the new fire station twenty, building city project number one-five-B-seven-zero-zero-three-four-zero-one.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? It's a vote of six-zero. Item forty-four.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with I-55 Management LLC and I-55 Management TLLC to provide office space for the Jackson Police Department precinct four's operation.
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, we had good discussion about it yesterday. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor? It's a vote of six-zero, and we've already taken care of item forty-five. So, colleagues, we're going to start the discussion items, but I just want you to know that, I'm sorry. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, Madam President, if, if we can, if we could skip down to reports, I believe that Human and Cultural Service has a report on Thyme Hall that they really wanted to say publicly.
Mr. Banks, thank you for that. That is absolutely right. All right, so we will go to item fifty-one. Clerk?
Monthly financial reports is required.
No, no, not fifty-one. Reports under fifty.
This is a different, it's a new agenda. It's, we have a revised agenda as of this morning.
Litigation matter.
No, she was, she started reading fifty-one.
Oh, this is a report. I'm sorry.
Yeah, she started reading fifty-one.
All right, so fifty, okay, okay, thank you. All right, so this is a report that we consider, colleagues, monthly. And so if, Mr. Banks, you had a, something you wanted to add to this conversation?
Yeah, no, just, it's a report from members, mayor, and department. And I, for my understanding that Human and Cultural Service has a report that they wanted to present to this body today.
Mike Williams, Deputy Director, Department of Human and Cultural Services. This is a follow-up on the, on the Thyme Hall situation, an update on the ongoing remediation progress. We are happy to share the, these are the findings of the certified industrial hygienist testing that we had. And this is what's going to inform the scope as we move forward, the scope of the remediate, remediation process. We were happy to see that it wasn't as bad as we were expecting. It's basically only skin deep, just contact and, and surface cleaning for the most part. There will be some carpet that'll be removed, but we wanted to keep the public informed of where we were with the process. And, you know, once we received the testing back, we did, you know, in an effort to keep that communication going with our patrons, wanted to share that with the public. And so, also to present it to the council today, so you guys can kind of keep your finger on what we got going on over there. Also, we made some progress with the HVAC fast track. We were able to procure the chiller that we were aiming to get. The last time I was here, we sent the PO off yesterday. That is going to fast track the entire project by around 75% maybe. We've got a six-month jump on the previous procurement timeline, so that was good as well. So we're making progress, and I just wanted to let everybody know and present you guys with the report.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just fifty words or less. What does this report entails? I mean, what, what's the results?
Okay, I can't promise fifty words here, but the independent certified industrial hygienist is who we called in to basically do the, do the air testing and surface testing and see what we were dealing with in the building. And those are his findings.
Okay. Have you processed the findings? Or do we have to dig through here? I see quite a lot of veridium.
Well, I'm not a, I'm not him. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the, what that means. But I would say if you want to start with the conclusions is probably the, the best place.
Page seven.
Yeah, and it gets into the more of the granular findings kind of in the back.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Anybody else? I, we have enough money to do all this?
Yes, ma'am.
From the state?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then do you have any kind of estimated timeline on, I know this is a million-dollar question, literally, but.
Hopefully not.
Do we have any kind of estimated timeline on when we can reopen Thyme Hall?
Not yet. I wouldn't say it's prudent to say that yet, but the remediation team has come back for the third time today, and I will have more information on that probably later this evening. So I have to meet with them after five today and then move on to the next phase in the morning. So possibly tomorrow, we'd have a better idea then.
All right, thank you. And you don't foresee our needing to have any additional conversations in the budget process about adding, needing additional funds for this?
No, ma'am. Again, the state funding has, our partners at the Capitol and our community partners have always been very generous with Thyme Hall. They're very invested. And so the funds are there for us to make these necessary changes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams, and we appreciate your hard work on this.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, colleagues, we'll go back now to discussion items. We'll wait for, well, Mr. Stokes out. Mr. Hartley, would you like to start with prevention, your number one, prevention of copper theft?
Yes, and I'd like to, some representative from JPD to be able to chime in. I think I mentioned it to the chief here a few minutes ago, but I guess we have a representative here. Madam President, we have a problem with copper theft around our city. Recently, I was trying to, I had complaints of lighting being out around Highway 80, around the I-20, I-220 interstate. And I spoke with the Department of Transportation, and they said that, okay, problem was copper theft. People are looking for copper and other metals. And so that's a problem just with general lighting. I know we've had problems in our parks with lighting due to copper theft, and also residential areas. We have folks ripping off air conditioning units, looking for metal material. Also businesses, the same thing. My question, or what I'd like addressed is, what options do we have? I, I know that if they didn't have someone to take it to and to, that would buy it, you know, then that would be an issue. Then perhaps we can, you know, cut back on it. So I want to know, perhaps, is there anything we can do for, is the ordinances addressing these scrap yards, salvage places? What do you all need, need from us? What could we do? Or what, what do you all envision as being a solution to this issue?
Deputy Chief Johnson, the Jackson Police Department. We do have several arrests on the rise in front of copper theft. And the biggest thing that we use as is our partnership with the recycle yards and our leads online, strengthening those city ordinances of reporting the, the recycled copper and precious metals. We'll cut down on that. But we do have several investigations. We made several arrests on last week in regarding that. One of the biggest, biggest corporates of copper theft is from our abandoned businesses like Metro Center. We've made several arrests, on some occasions, the same individuals on it. But tracking those individuals and keeping a partnership with our recycling yards is one tool that we use.
Are those recycling yards, I mean, do they need any encouragement? Is there anything they can do towards it, helping us to identify these folks? Or do we need stronger ordinance regarding them?
Well, it's the, within the city, we have a, we have a good partnership with the recycle yards within the city. But as you know, they can pillage the city of Jackson and take their items outside the city of Jackson. But each major city is having its issue, especially with the Cadillac converters was one of the biggest cohorts that started this. But most recycle yards are steering away from those because they're being tracked quite heavily.
Okay. And what are some of the penalties? And I'm looking now at, at doing something to prevent it, a deterrent. I am, I, I like the way you guys are handling our open dumping folks. You're making them famous.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other ways we can work towards making these folks famous? Because they are helping to destroy our city.
Yes, sir. We will, we will, we can do that. And one of our biggest proponents in that is actually video surveillance. Keeping up with the blue light camera systems and strategic camera systems has cut down on the copper and metal thefts across, across the city as well. We use that in cutting down the thefts at our community centers. One example is the, the Sykes Community Center. We instituted a, a blue light camera out there and cut that theft down quite, quite substantially.
I thank you for you guys' effort, and I'm glad to hear that these folks are cooperating with you on the receiving end. And I encourage you to make them famous. When you guys arrest them, put them out there, okay? So others, it can be a deterrent. Thank you so much, sir.
Dr. Amori?
Okay. I, I had a question. I might have missed this, but can you hold the people who receive? who receive this stolen copper accountable as well? Is there anything on the books that, uh, penalizes them for accepting what they know to be stolen goods?
Well, the biggest thing on that is proving that they have knowledge of it being stolen. Uh, with those arrests, they're normally in the Larchney range. Uh, there is no law against having the precious metals. It's just proving it. Uh, one thing that, uh, that is coming out now that we, uh, have to research it and make it available to our communities is serializing their, um, Cadillac converters, serializing certain precious materials, which would give us a tool to actually figure out if it's stolen.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, uh, just a question. And I think this will be to legal and to planning. One, can planning make a requirement that before copper is removed from an AC unit or electrical unit, uh, that there be a permit to remove it? And in addition with that permit, uh, then there's some type of tag created that, like, like if I get my own copper and go down, then I can prove it's my own copper. But if you say, well, I got it, where did you get it from? I got it from such a, such a place where, where's your permit that showed that you had the right to remove it? I think that there are other ways to look at our ability to, to do this. And it might, you know, we do a lot of permitting for removal of stuff anyway. I think that we need to fine line the removal of copper, um, uh, because that deals with residential businesses. And so I think that, you know, um, people gotta take our permits to remove plumbing fixtures. So I, I think that that's, that's a way to look at it.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. Any other, um, questions or comments on this item? Uh, thank you, Mr. Hartley. We're gonna move on now, Mr. Stokes, to your item and up to a, a discussion on the Hines County Jail update.
Thank you. And thank you, Legal, for coming up. Let us know the status of the, um, the Hines County Jail and what do we need to do with the largest city in the state? And we don't have a jail.
Well, I'm not sure if this is what you're asking. Let me, let me tell you this first 'cause it, it just happened yesterday. Um, we received, uh, correspondence yesterday through the Hines County Board Supervisors, uh, indicating that they're, they're going to start seeking fees from any agency or municipality who has, um, anybody detained and held in the Hines County jails, including the youth center. They're gonna charge, they say they're going to charge fifty dollars per day from the first day of detention until there's an indictment. Once there's an indictment, there's no longer a, a charge. Um, I responded yesterday with some questions. Um, I provided those to the administration and to Council President Lindsey, um, uh, by email yesterday. You may not have had a chance to see it yet. Um, um, so we're gonna need to look at what we're doing with that. I've also reached out to a couple of the other, uh, municipalities that'll be affected by that. Uh, they say they're gonna charge that on July first and January first of each year. So it would begin this coming January first.
I, I think, and it's been a while, but I thought the contract had a provision. And I don't know if you've seen the contract yet.
I haven't.
But the provision was it must be agreeable by both parties. Now, if that's in there, I know the city's not gonna agree.
Part, part of, right. Part of what I asked for, just so the council will be aware, I asked, uh, the board's attorney to provide me with a copy of the board's order, any documents they referenced or referred to in, in coming up with that order and what the basis for these charges would be. So presumably that would include any contract that exists, but we'll see.
Yeah. Now, and when they made that agreement, they also made the agreement by the ambulance service. You know, we gave them the authority to, um, be the, so that all ambulance service go through the county. So it was other issues, but everybody's alive. Harvey, Harvey Johnson's alive. We can contact them just in case we don't have a copy of the, uh, agreements. We can talk to everybody and, and form, what needs to be formed. But the issue is, is the same issue we've been seeing for years and years and years. Why it's the city of Jackson, why do we have to pay seventy percent of Hines County taxes and one hundred percent of the city of Jackson tax? That's taxation without representation. And they took the position that y'all use our courts. But you know, it's gonna be a good fight, you know? It's gonna be a good fight, but there's some agreements already out there.
That's, that's what I wanted. I need to see the agreements, uh, for certain.
Uh, my concern was, we, we had the, the state trying to give the city at one time the jail across the street. And that's what I have on the agenda.
That, that's gonna be somebody else that's gonna need to answer that. I, I, I know what you're talking about, but I haven't been involved in those discussions.
Can you look at it and I put it back on the agenda?
Sure.
And let, let's find out what it would take. And I was trying to get some information why when the budget seasons, just 'cause we had to allocate money. But I think everybody realized we must have a jail.
I'll look into it. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. This is certainly an item that's on our minds. Thank you for putting that on the agenda. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? All right. We are gonna move now to your next item, Mr. Stokes, which is Jackson State Parkway.
Uh, in the, I put this item on the agenda because we need to have it repaved. Uh, it's much older than the, in the real parkway in this area, the one over in Madison County. Um, it's been resurfaced and everything else. And it's time for this parkway to be resurfaced. Uh, it was created through the legislature. And I don't know to what degree, uh, that we're looking at state funds. Or we need to look at one percent minus. But the parkway is in poor condition. It need to be, um, it need to be upgraded. We're not gonna get to the issues about the business nodes that was part of the overall law. When they created, it was supposed to have businesses also on the parkway that never materialized. Uh, but right now, my main concern is that the condition of the parkway is poor and every day it's getting worse. Students and everyone else coming to Jackson State University must drive on a parkway that they see is in poor condition. And we need to have plans, some entity, state level, federal level, somebody that we're gonna have a time certain to have that parkway resurfaced. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Did you get note of that, Mr.?
I didn't.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay. Um, so discussion, review and continuation of COVID nineteen local emergency. Um, colleagues, anyone have anything to say or add to that?
I, I'll just say for the record, uh, I am interested to see, uh, the new updates that, um, CDC is coming out with, with these new strands and also their new recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Just for the record.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do not get it. It's a killer.
I've just, I just had it. And so, all right. Um, item fifty, litigation matters. Does this require going into executive session?
I have one that does not. I have two that do.
Okay. Let's go with the one that doesn't.
Sure. So the one that doesn't, uh, I was a little bit late coming in this morning. We had an administrative hearing, um, in the municipal courthouse, uh, on Hotel O, um, where Judge Clay, sitting as a hearing officer, ruled that Hotel O was a public menace. Uh, fined it, the, the owners the maximum amount that they can be fined. Uh, we will be, uh, the next step in the process, so this is separate from the criminal process that's under appeal. Uh, the next step in the process is to bring that to the city council. Uh, the notice that's required is at least fourteen days before, uh, that, that, that the hotel owners need that notice before the city can consider it. So that means they probably can't get it on the September tenth council agenda, uh, because I don't think we can get our notice out in time. But it will be on the September twenty-fourth agenda. At that time, what will be presented to the council is the history of the Hotel O, the photographs that were taken two and three and four years ago, the court orders that have been entered in the criminal case, the court order that's now been in, uh, entered in the administrative side, updated pictures and reports from code enforcement. And the ask of, of the council will be to agree with Judge Clay that the hotel is a public menace and that it should be demolished. Um, by that day or shortly thereafter, like within a week of that, I expect to have, um, official estimates of what it would cost to demolish. Um, planning is working on that and getting bids on that right now. I'll also have an update at that time about private funding that we've secured, that we know is available. There may be more, but we know we've got a fair amount, uh, to help the city with it. And, and if the ci- if, I, I wouldn't presume to, to know what the council will choose, but if the governing authorities vote to demolish, um, and we have the price, then we can have it, uh, scheduled to be demolished, assuming the contractor can do it, uh, in October.
All right. Thank you. Um, now, ju- just for clarity, fourteen days, is that, that's fourteen business days?
No, it's fourteen days, but, but to get, but we have to make sure. So, so the, the issue isn't so much getting any notice out. We can get it out today if we had to. The issue is that when you're gonna, when you are, when one of the possibilities is demolishing a, a, a commercial building, there's some specifics we wanna make sure are in that notice so the hotel owner, owners cannot later say, well, we didn't know you were gonna do that. And, and in, in all candor, I, I just, I don't know if we can get it out today, which is what we'd have to do to have that notice. And we couldn't do it before today because we didn't have the administrative decision until this morning.
Okay. And thank you. All right. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just real quick, Madam President. I, I noticed, well, I know that Hotel O was in the estimate of the presentations given to us.
Yes, sir.
For, but I know that the plan was for the twenty-five year. Are we trying to get this done in the time limit? Will we get it done within this fiscal year administration?
Real, well, that's a question for finance. That's a question for practical. I'll tell you this, there's no way we'll get it demolished in September. It wouldn't be possible. So we're gonna be in the new fiscal year regardless.
Okay. So I think we already have the, the planning based on, well, the financial information based on planning.
Yes, sir. I, I recall, Mr. Banks, they did include an estimate. I think it was what? It was, it was a little bit less than three hundred thousand, maybe?
Yeah, that, that's, we, we think it'll be under that, but we don't have an actual bid yet.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll have it in the next couple of weeks.
All right. So colleagues, the next two items we have to do in executive session. So before we go into executive session, are there any announcements before we close, um, go into executive session? All right. Oh, Dr. Omari?
Okay. Thank you. Um, we'd like to announce, this was talked about earlier, but we'd like to announce Utilities Day, uh, that's taking place to, uh, this evening from six to eight at the JSU East Center. And this was organized by our Neighborhood Services Division in Planning. And so I see on this flyer that they have Atmos Energy, uh, a beam team related to broadband, MDOT, Entergy, Jackson Water, and of course, the city will be there as well. So it's at the JSU East Center, twelve thirty Raymond Road, uh, in Jackson. I'd also like to announce that we have our summer edition of our newsletter that's been published. And each of you has been given a packet with, uh, newsletters in it to distribute to your constituents. And, um, I saved the date for October tenth at six PM for the state of the city. It would be held at the Ice House. So, uh, just want you to put that on your calendar. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Omari. Um, y'all, it's, we did not do a straw poll on fifty-one. We listened to Thalimar and then I forgot to call for the straw poll. So this is a report. We get this every month. I just wanna make sure that you all got it, received it and have seen it. With the show, show of hands. Okay. The majority have. So there we go. Thank you. All right. Um, with that, colleagues, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam President, I believe we go into closed session, uh, to discuss potential litigation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Consider going into actual executive session to discuss potential litigation. All in favor? Okay. It's a vote of four zero. Uh, we are now in, now out of executive session. No, um, no action was taken while we were in executive session. Colleagues, is there anything else to come? Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to close this meeting in honor of Sam Curry. He's the middle brother to, uh, uh, Tim Curry and David Curry and also the brother to Dor- Dorcas Thicpen. And so that's a historic family in this community. And just want to say that our prayers are with, uh, Mr. Sam Curry.
Thank you, colleagues. Anything else? All right. If there is nothing else to come before this body, colleagues, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.